Okay, thank you. Please be seated. All right, welcome to the 16th meeting of council on October 15th. I'm going to start with a land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we're gathered on the traditional lands of the Anishnaabik, Haudenosaunee, Leni Peawak and Atewandron peoples. We honor and respect the history, languages and culture of the diverse indigenous people who call this territory home. We acknowledge all of the treaties that are specific to this area. The two-row Wampanoag Treaty of the Haudenosaunee Confederacy, Silver Covenant chain, the beaver hunting grounds of the Haudenosaunee Nanfan Treaty of 1701, the McKee Treaty of 1790, the London Township Treaty of 1796, the Huron Track Treaty of 1827 with the Anishnaabik, and the Dish with One Spoon Covenant Wampan of the Anishnaabik and Haudenosaunee. The three indigenous nations that are neighbors to London are the Chipwas of the Thames First Nation, Oneida Nation of the Thames, and the Muncie Delaware Nation, who all continue to live as sovereign nations with individual and unique languages, cultures and customs. Also, the City of London is committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for meetings upon request. To make a request specific to this meeting, please contact council agenda@london.ca or 519-661-2489, extension 2425. Okay, next we'll do singing of the National Anthem. Charlie Weber is a local troubadour, lead singer and the lead singer of Glorious Failure and an award losing singer-songwriter. Charlie has been playing in London across and across Canada around the world for over a decade. You can catch his featured performances at the Forest City Film Festival this weekend. Please join me in welcoming Charlie, who will now perform the National Anthem for us, and please rise for that.
Oh, Canada, our home, our native land. True patriot love in all of thy command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true North strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
All right, we're on to disclosures of community interest. I'll look to colleagues for any disclosures. Okay, seeing none, there are no recognitions today, unless anybody has one. No. Review of confidential matters should be considered in public. There are none. We have council in closed session, of which there are 10 items. So I'll look for a motion to move into camera for that session. Moved by Councillor Caddie, seconded by Councillor Ramon. Any discussion? Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Councillor Stevenson? Closing the vote motion carries 14 to zero.
Okay, and we'll move to Committee Room 5. Thank you.
Thank you, please be seated. Okay, that concludes our in-camera session. We have confirmation signing at the minutes of previous meetings. We have the 15th meeting, which was held on September 24th, 2024. I need a mover and a seconder for that. Councillor McAllister, seconded by Councillor Ferreira. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Councillor Van Meerebergen. Second call, Councillor Van Meerebergen. Thank you. Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
Okay, no communications and petitions this time. No motions, which was given. We're on to reports. We have the 12th report of the Community Protective Services Committee. I'll turn it over to the Chair to present the report.
Thank you, Mayor. Pleased to report the 12th report of the Community Protective Services Committee. I have no declarations of interest, and I had no poll requests, but I do actually want to point out that there is a revised item for Item 6, 5.1, just some housekeeping amendments to that, and that was circulated to council.
Yeah, so we'll do that separate then, for sure. So 5.1 will be separate. Does anybody want anything else separate on this agenda? Okay, seeing none, you can make a motion.
All right, I can move one, Items one through five, and Item seven, excluding six.
Okay, those items are on the floor by the Chair. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
Okay, Councillor, so this is the one that you said there was an amendment for, so you can put the original on the floor, and then if you'd like, you can also move the revised language.
Thank you, Mayor. So I should put the original on the floor? Okay, I'll put the original item on the floor, and just let me know when to move the revised language. Actually, I'll move the revised language right now.
Okay, so I need a seconder for the revised language. Councillor Ploza. And colleagues, that was circulated as an amendment sheet. I'll see if there's any questions, though. Go ahead, Councillor Stevenson.
Thank you. I was just looking for some clarity, because my understanding was this was Strong Mayor Powers, but it's coming and now being moved as an amendment, so I'm just a little confused. Is it Strong Mayor, or is this something that council's doing?
So I'll clarify. This one was not used by Strong Mayor Powers. This one came directly and normally through the committee process. I would say there was a clause in there where staff asked to use a, basically bring forward a four, I think there's a clause G in there, which is a request by staff to seek some council direction, which I suggested they do before I would bring forward these. But even under Strong Mayor legislation, the only thing that I would end up doing with that would be bringing them directly to council and skipping the committee cycle process. So this is just regular process through committee, suggested change that staff have identified between the committee meeting and now that is required based on their understanding of the components of the motion.
Okay, thank you. Could we just get an update from staff on this?
Sure, we can give just a short overview of why there's an amendment piece.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So essentially, what this allows us to do is cuts off four weeks of our cycle for the approval. This particular procurement was actually, it closed in early September, and then the evaluations were done around that same time. So you see that now we're at council in the middle of October, and this would actually allow us to award, it would have been the last council cycle, which would have sped up our time to get more affordable housing built.
Yeah, I think the councillor's question was just an articulation of the change from the committee recommendation to the amendment sheet, which I believe, if I looked at it correctly, it's dropping the term Housing Development Corporation from Clause E.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Essentially, it's just allowing us some efficiency when we go to actually transfer the land from the HDC to Wastel Homes. The city, it just, basically, it simplifies the language and allows us to do that more quickly and more efficiently.
Okay. Okay, so any other questions on that? Go ahead, Deputy Mary Lewis.
Thank you, worship. I'm going to be brief. I just want to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Felberg and his team for moving this forward. This is a redevelopment of a former school land that we purchased in my ward. The property's been sitting vacant for a while. We've had a plan of subdivision come through planning committee, and now we've got our first partner on some of the build there. A lot more to do. I do wonder if, very quickly, I don't know if this would be Mr. Felberg or Ms. Cher, but if we could get a quick from staff as to, part of this plan of subdivision requires a new road opening, Duluth Bank completed, which will have its own disruption for the neighborhood, so delighted that Wastel is coming forward to start the build. Do we know when the road opening, or at least the construction road opening, is anticipated to happen?
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So the design of the road is actually at about a 90% right now, so we're getting close to being able to tender. So we're anticipating in the early part of 2025, we'll go out for tender, we'll find a contractor and start construction. This is a lot of just-in-time kind of thing, so we'll be getting Wastel out there, starting some of their work and some of their site grading, while also constructing the road at the same time. We'll also be addressing any safety concerns from the constructor policies and issues that we may have as well.
Great, thank you for that. Happy to see this project moving forward. Going to be a great addition to the ward, and I hope that we're taking notes and making templates so that if we want to replicate some of this on the Fairmount school lands and Council McAllisters ward in the
Thank you, please be seated. Okay, that concludes our in-camera session. We have confirmation signing at the minutes of previous meetings. We have the 15th meeting, which was held on September 24th, 2024. I need a mover and a seconder for that. Councillor McAllister, seconded by Councillor Ferreira. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Councillor Van Meerebergen. Second call, Councillor Van Meerebergen. Thank you. Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
Okay, no communications and petitions this time. No motions to which notice was given. We're on to reports. We have the 12th report of the Community Protective Services Committee. I'll turn it over to the Chair to present the report.
Thank you, Mayor. Pleased to report, the 12th report of the Community Protective Services Committee. I have no declarations of interest, and I had no poll request. But I do actually want to point out that there is a revised item for Item 6, 5.1, just some housekeeping items or housekeeping amendments to that. And that was circulated to council.
Yeah, so we'll do that separate then, for sure. So 5.1 will be separate. Does anybody want anything else separate on this agenda? Okay, seeing none, you can make a motion.
All right, I can move one, Items 1 through 5, and Item 7 excluding 6.
Okay, those items are on the floor by the Chair. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. We'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
Okay, councillor, so this is the one that you said there was an amendment for. So you can put the original on the floor, and then if you'd like, you can also move the revised language.
Thank you, Mayor. So I should put the original on the floor? Okay, I'll put the original item on the floor. And just let me know when to move the revised language. Actually, I'll move the revised language right now.
Okay, so I need a seconder for the revised language. Councillor Ploza. And colleagues, that was circulated as an amendment sheet. I'll see if there's any questions, though. Go ahead, Councillor Stevenson.
Thank you. I was just looking for some clarity, because my understanding was this was strong mayor powers, but it's coming and now being moved as an amendment. So I'm just a little confused. Is it strong mayor, or is this something that council's doing?
So I'll clarify. This one was not used by strong mayor powers. This one came directly and normally through the committee process. I would say there was a clause in there where staff asked to use a, basically bring forward a four, I think there's a clause G in there, which is a request by staff to seek some council direction, which I suggested they do before I would bring forward these. But even under strong mayor legislation, the only thing that I would end up doing with that would be bringing directly to council and skipping the committee cycle process. So this is just regular process through committee, suggested change that staff have identified between the committee meeting and now that is required based on their understanding of the components of the motion.
Okay, thank you. Could we just get an update from staff on this?
Sure, we can give just a short overview of the, why there's an amendment piece.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So essentially, what this allows us to do is it cuts off four weeks of our cycle for the approval. This particular procurement was actually, it closed in early September, and then the evaluations were done around that same time. So you see that now we're at council in the middle of October, and this would actually allow us to award, it would have been the last council cycle, which would have sped up our time to get more affordable housing built.
Yeah, I think the councillor's question was just an articulation of the change from the committee recommendation to the amendment sheet, which I believe, if I looked at it correctly, it's dropping the term Housing Development Corporation from Clause E.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Essentially, it's just allowing us some efficiency when we go to actually transfer the land from the HDC to Wastel Homes. The city, it just, basically, it simplifies the language and allows us to do that more quickly and more efficiently.
Okay. Okay, so any other questions on that? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm going to be brief. I just want to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Felberg and his team for moving this forward. This is a redevelopment of a former school land that we purchased in my ward. The property's been sitting vacant for a while. We've had a plan of subdivision come through Planning Committee, and now we've got our first partner on some of the build there. A lot more to do. I do wonder if, very quickly, I don't know if this would be Mr. Felberg or Ms. Share, but if we could get a quick from staff as to, part of this plan of subdivision requires a new road opening, Duluth Bank completed, which will be, have its own disruption for the neighborhood. So delighted that Wastel is coming forward to start the build. Do we know when the road opening, or at least the construction road opening, is anticipated to happen?
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So the design of the road is actually at about a 90% right now. So we're getting close to being able to tender. So we're anticipating in the early, early part of 2025, we'll go out for tender, we'll find a contractor and start construction. This is a lot of just-in-time kind of thing. So we'll be getting Wastel out there, starting some of their work and some of their site grading, while also constructing the road at the same time. We'll also be addressing any safety concerns from the constructor policies and issues that we may have as well.
Great, thank you for that. Happy to see this project moving forward. Going to be a great addition to the ward, and I hope that we're taking notes and making templates so that if we want to replicate some of this on the Fairmount school lands and Councillor McAllister's ward in the future, that the opportunity to replicate it is there as well, because I think there's some opportunity for more affordable housing to come in the East End where we've acquired some lands. So thank you for the work on that.
Okay, and just to remind everybody, we're on the amendment, which is just removing the words "from the Housing Development Corporation, London" from Clause E. And that's moved and seconded. Any other debate on the amendment? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
And I'll look for a mover and seconder for the as amended motion. Councillor Ferreira, and seconded by Councillor Cuddy. Any discussion on the as amended motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
Thank you, and that concludes the 12th report of the Community Protective Services Committee.
Great, thanks. We're on to the 13th report of Civic Works Committee, Councillor Hopkins.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. I'd like to put the 13th meeting of the Civic Works Committee on the floor. I've had no one ask to pull anything.
Would anybody like anything dealt with separately from this committee? Go ahead, Councillor Stevenson.
Thank you, I'd just like to pull 10.
Okay, anyone else? Something separate? Okay, Councillor Hopkins.
Yeah, it was a very productive meeting. We approved seven consent items, and we received two delegations, one from the Chair of the ECAC Advisory Committee, as well as Graham Henderson. Oh, that one is being pulled, so I'll wait for that one. That is my report then.
Okay, so you're willing to put 1 through 9 on the floor? That's on the floor by the Chair. Any discussion on those items? Go ahead, Councillor Trosaw.
Just a brief question through the Chair. I'm sorry, it's council. Just a, just a brief question through the Chair. Steph, could we be any more precise in terms of what the reasoning is on the, on the Mud Creek matter for the additional costs? Because this is not the first time this has come to council.
Go ahead.
Thank you, and through you, Your Worship. The additional costs related to Mud Creek are subsoil, geotechnical conditions, as well as some permitting delays. The permitting delays have been addressed, and we are confident we have the geotechnical conditions fully in hand.
Is there an estimate to the Chair as to how much additional time this is going to take before this project is deemed complete, such that the holding provisions can be removed?
Go ahead.
I apologize, Your Worship. I don't have that answer with me, but I can provide it to the council via email.
Is it, just roughly, there would be some delay of at least some, some period of time, right?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. There has been some delays. We've been waiting for the final permitting from Upper Thames. We have received those permits at this time. As I understand, we're a few months behind, and we expect to continue to complete the work over the next year.
Councillor Trosaw.
Is there any obligation to the Chair for the developer or the property owner to pay for all or any of this in terms of reimbursing the city?
Thank you, Your Worship. The majority of these costs are actually DC-funded through the sewer rate reserves. So it is development-funded overall. There's no developer requirement to pay for this work. The delays are related to the conditions on the city project, as well as the permitting delays, so not in the hands of the developer north of Oxford.
Thank you, no further questions.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions on the matters before us, which is all of the Civic Works Committee with the exception of 10? Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
Councillor Hopkins.
Yes, I'd like to put Number 10, the Memorandum of Understanding, with the London Chamber of Commerce for Action on Climate Change, on the floor.
Okay, that's on the floor by the Chair. Any questions on that one? Go ahead, Councillor Stevenson.
Thank you, I just have a quick comment. It's kind of more of a silent protest vote, I guess. I'm going to be voting no, and it's not so much that I'm against what's here, but that, you know, we've got businesses struggling all over the city with theft and vandalism and social disorder issues. And although this is, I'm really hoping that we're going to see something come forward from the city where maybe we could join in with London Chamber of Commerce or other organizations and do something to help our small businesses in the city.
Okay, any other discussion on this? Go ahead, Councillor Trosaw.
Well, I'd like to really thank the Chamber of Commerce for coming forward with this. And I think this goes to the fact that we can be doing more than one thing at once. There are a lot of different ways we could be assisting businesses, and there are a lot of productive roles that the Chamber of Commerce could be playing in this city, and this is certainly one of them. And I enthusiastically support this. And really want to, again, thank the Chamber for coming forward with this.
Okay, any other speakers? Go ahead, Councillor Privill.
Thank you, and I did have, when Mr. Henderson was here, I did ask the questions in regards of our other cooperation and MOUs in terms of the aspects, what was already said here, homelessness, growing your businesses, et cetera. I take this as a first step, and I take this as, when I actually had a conversation with him after, and I take this as an opportunity to maximize our higher levels of government funding. And, but I'm hoping this is the first step, and we are going to focus on the commerce and opportunity to grow our businesses. And the next, next ones will be MOUs between city and chamber in these aspects. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Councillor Hopkins, go ahead.
Yeah, if I may, just add to the Chamber's delegation, one of the comments made by the Chamber, which made me really think this is important for council to discuss, is that the Chamber, there are many, many small businesses that belong to the Chamber, and they all do want to play a part of doing something when it comes to climate change. And this MOU is an opportunity to make that happen. So I am very supportive of this moving forward.
Okay. I don't see any of the speakers, so we're going to open this for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 1.
And that is my report.
Thank you, councillor. I have the 15th report of SPPC next. That's Item 8.3. I'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm happy to present the 15th report of the Street Priorities and Policy Committee. I have not been asked to have any items pulled by colleagues, so if you'd like to canvas and see if there's any items, otherwise I'll move the whole report.
Sure, I'll look for any items separate. Councillor Stevenson.
I'd like to pull 4, please.
Okay, no problem. 4? Anybody else with something separate? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Worship. So I'll move 1 through 3 and 5 through 15.
All right, any discussion on those items? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
Go ahead.
And I will now put Item 4 on the floor.
All right, any discussion on 4? Go ahead, Councillor Stevenson.
Thank you. I just want to say the similar comments that I made at SPPC. It's not that I am questioning the work that LEDC does, but I do believe that a 2-point, almost $5 million contract should have a budget that the public can see where the money is going. And I do believe that we should know what salaries are being paid, because given what's happened at LHSC and TVDSB just recently, I think there's a reasonable expectation from the public to say, are we doing our due diligence in terms of knowing whether there's $400,000 salaries here? And so for that reason, I'll be voting no to this.
Okay, any other speakers? Go ahead, Councillor Privill.
Thank you. I will accept the report that was proposed by the CEO of LEDC. But having said that, again, based on the city's investment and the best of interest of half a million of Londoners, we should be receiving in any way this information, same as the half a million of Londoners. Thank you.
Okay, any other speakers? Go ahead, Councillor Ramon.
Thank you, and through you. So on this item, I just want to clarify again that LEDC submits audited statements annually, and that those are available to members of council, should they request them in camera.
I'll go to our staff to confirm that we have audited statements from LEDC submitted in somewhere. Go ahead.
Thank you, and through you, Worship. That's correct. Yes, we do receive audited statements. They go to, I believe, the DCM of Planning and Economic Development.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And so again, by way of motion, we can motion to have those available if needed, and if that was an issue for anyone, that could be put forward as a motion. And otherwise, I, I'm discouraged by the spirit of the conversation when we're talking about the report that was given to us. It was a report of highlights from LEDC on their, their year-to-date and how things had went and the work that they had done. So I'm pleased by the results that I saw come to us. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, Worship. And I just, through you, want, would like to ask our staff if they can confirm that our agreement with the LEDC is a purchase-of-service contract agreement with what is a private corporation and not a public entity, although we may be the sole contract that they have at the moment. It is a purchase-of-service contract and not, in fact, public sector employees doing this work.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Worship. Through you, that is correct.
Thank you.
Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, then we'll open this for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 1.
And that completes the 15th report of SPPC. Excellent, thank you very much. We're on to the 15th report of Planning and Environment Committee. I'll turn it over to the Chair.
Thank you, Chair. I'll let the Chair know that I've had one item requested to be pulled, 5, which is 3.1 agenda. Other than that, no other requests.
Anyone, anything else pulled separately? Okay, I'll let you make a motion.
So I'll move 1 through 4 and 6 through 9.
Okay, those are on the floor. I'm going to make comments on one of those items myself, so I'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, Worship. I'll ask you to hold for just a moment, and I have the timer ready, so go ahead.
Yes, colleagues, so I didn't join the Planning Committee to comment on this item, but I appreciate the comments that were made. I went back and reviewed them. The comment, the item that I'm referring to is the redevelopment of the London psychiatric hospital lands and the significant number of residential units that are coming to that part of the city along a rapid transit corridor, multi-phase development with lots of different types of housing, including heritage retention of some of the natural and unique features of that particular site. And I wanted to just step back and identify for colleagues that, you know, these 8,462 units mean that our council now, to date this year, has approved over 21,000, actually 21,572 units of development. This is on the heels of last year approving about 5,000, the year before approving about 4,000. We're approving a lot of units across the city, and we're doing our part to try to ensure that there are approvals in place to meet the commitments that we've made, either through the Housing Accelerator Fund or through our commitment to the province, or even some campaign promises that some of us may have made, including myself. Just so you know, if you go back to the start of this term of council, October of 2022, we've now approved 27,315 units of development. And so when we said we were going to say to the province that we're going to work towards 47,000, you know, so far, between October of 2022 and today, we're at 27,315. Now, we all know we'd like to see a lot of those permissions come to fruition, and that is actively the work that we're working on, whether that's speeding up planning processes, whether that's creating incentive programs, office residential conversion, opening up our parking lots, looking at CIP programs and reviewing those, working with the federal government through the Housing Accelerator Fund, or the various investments that the provincial government has made in infrastructure that allows us to open up new units in the downtown core and elsewhere. Certainly, all hands are on deck to ensure that we're not only approving units, but trying to bring those units to fruition. And I know Minister Calandra and I sat in this building just down the hallway and met with members of the development community to say, lots of units are being approved. We want to ensure they come to fruition. Let us know the barriers. Let us know how we can partner together to ensure that all of these council permissions become housing and spaces for people to live in our city. So I'm very proud of the work of this council so far. I know we've got lots more to do. I know that there's lots of things that will come through Planning Committee in the years to come, but as we approach the halfway mark in this term, you know, we're certainly, we're certainly doing our part in the number of approvals that we're making through our Planning Committee and the leadership there, and of course, as a council as a whole, as it comes through this body here. So I just wanted to pause. Significant development for our city and actually significantly adds to the totals that we've approved so far at this point through the course of this term.
Thank you, Worship. I will return the Chair to you, noting I have Councillor Privill next on the speakers list.
Councillor Privill, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to mention the 2.1 at the PAC Committee. I did ask when we received the housing updates if we can have year-to-date actuals and then remaining month as a forecast. And then I had the discussions with the staff, and I did, I was told that it would be really based on averages from the past, and I don't think that would be really very truly meaningful. So my request, I thought the forecast could be potentially based on the certain actuals projections, but that's not the case. So I just want to let you know that in terms of the based on previous averages, it wouldn't be really beneficial. So I don't request that forecast anymore. Thank you.
Councillor Cuddy.
Thank you, Worship, and through you. I'd like to reference 3.3, Development on Webster Street. This is in my ward. It's an exciting project. I was at Planning Committee. I was delighted to see this come through. This is the type of info projects that we look forward to seeing, Your Worship, in the East End. My only comment was that I, I had hoped that this, this project wouldn't flow onto two residential streets that are cul-de-sacs. I spoke with staff. I understand that cul-de-sacs are really, it was really meant for a through road years ago. It was hard for me to explain to the residents that their street is going to be a busy street or both Croatia and Sandra. I was out last week speaking to the residents, and I'm hoping that maybe in the future, before this development is finished or started, I should say, that something can be done with the residents on Webster Street that are still hoping that the developers, the applicant, will buy their properties, and they'll, they'll be able to flow onto Webster Street. But, Your Worship, this is the type of project that we enjoy seeing in the East End, and particularly in my ward, and I'm really encouraged by this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on the items that the Chair has put on the floor? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
Chair.
Thank you. I'd like to put 5 on the floor. It's Item 3.1, regarding a report from the Community Advisory Committee on Planning. Essentially, it was a recommendation from Heritage to take some Heritage action on this building as we decide the future of any additions, et cetera, on the way forward with our master accommodation plan.
Okay, that's on the floor by the Chair. Any comments or questions from colleagues? Councillor Hopkins, go ahead.
Yeah, Your Worship, I asked for this to be pulled, and my apologies, I was not able to view the Planning Committee debate and hear the verbal delegations for the, for considering designating City Hall as, as a heritage building. And maybe a question through you to staff is, what, what would that process look like if we were going to consider designating City Hall?
Just one sec. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I looked at what came through committee, so certainly relevant to the motion. So go ahead, go ahead, staff.
Thank you, through your worship. As part of any application, there would be a Heritage alteration permit request, and there'd have to be an impact assessment done from a Heritage perspective. However, that's looked at under Part Five of the Heritage Act in terms of the Conservation District, which is in West Woodfield. There is no mechanism at this point for the Part Four under the Heritage Act, so it'd have to be a direction through council to make that request for an evaluation to be done, to consider the interior elements from a Heritage perspective.
Go ahead, Counsel Hopkins.
Yeah, and as a, just a follow-up question, the, the request from the advisory group was to designate the outside though, or was it for both? Or because of the changes to the Heritage Act? My apologies, I am finding it a little bit confusing to understand the new changes. So if we aren't, if we are saying that we're not going to even look at it, that basically ends the conversation about any kind of designation, be it in or outside the building.
Can you just clarify for the Counsel, because I hear the question and the confusion, because there's a Conservation District, so what is protected already under the Conservation District? And then what was the Advisory Committee, what was the Advisory Committee asking beyond that, which obviously committee didn't go that direction, but if you could just articulate those two things separately, that'd be great.
Thank you, through your worship. Just for clarification, under the Heritage Conservation District, it's under Part Five, which is looking at the exterior of the building in terms of context of the neighborhood, the West Woodfield neighborhood. In terms of the Part Four under the Heritage Act, that would be the request from committee was to look at the interior and elements of the interior identified, even the baffles on the walls here in the council chambers. So those were the items that, for consideration for evaluation under the Part Four of the Heritage Act.
Go ahead, Counsel.
Yeah, thank you for that. I'm still not convinced that we should not do that, and I, I won't be supporting the recommendation coming forward. You know, I don't think there's anything wrong in considering what we have here in the building and what we can do with it going forward. It doesn't really stop any kind of development from happening, so I won't be supporting the recommendation.
Counsel Privile.
Thank you. I will certainly be supporting this recommendation from the committee, and I did mention a couple of things, even though I wasn't a member of committee, I mentioned a couple of these items. And the first one is both our current council and future council. I don't want us and the future councils to have tied hands in any particular way, and I always like us and future council be in charge of, fully in charge of the destiny. And I also set example, and the example had to do with Soho, with the two old big buildings, the hospitals, and I believe that if they weren't classified Heritage, that the, the transition to the deep affordable housing would have been much faster and much cheaper. And I wish that wasn't the case, and certainly I'm not going to put City Hall into the same perspective, so I will fully support the recommendation by the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Go ahead, Counsel Stevenson.
Thank you. I'm not going to be supporting this either. We heard from several people about the incredible valuable Heritage asset that we have, that we're, Londoners are proud of. And, you know, we talk a lot about Heritage, and we hold other Heritage property owners to a high standard. And I think that if that's what we believe, then we should be doing that ourselves here as well. This wasn't a commitment, it was the request for a report so that council could make a decision. My understanding is that this building meets five of nine attributes. Many buildings that we consider Heritage only do two of nine. So why we would just dismiss this for expediency or cost savings, I think goes against what we preach about Heritage and what we say. And this is, from what I understand, and I'd like to learn more about the value that we have here in this Heritage asset, and I think it's worth exploring. I think it's what Londoners expect of us, or I think we get to look at Heritage, and maybe it's not something that we support or ask our other London residents to do. Maybe it's something that we can look at at budget time to reduce some of the funds that we spend on that. So I'm interested to see how my other councillors vote, because we're talking about whether we value Heritage or not, and whether we value the, the attributes that the experts in our city are saying are unique and valuable and worth preserving.
Counsel Lehman, and then Deputy Mary Lewis.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a different take. I think right now there's a number of concerns I have. This is a pretty significant project that we're undertaking, you know, tens, hundreds of millions of dollars, and I don't want to handcuff people that are putting proposals forward on what unique designs that they can bring for our consideration, or future councils' consideration with restrictions. I think the workplace is, is evolving dramatically for people, both remote work and people that are coming in. And what I've found is, in even, you know, as was mentioned, people of Heritage properties, costs go up once you start having to factor those things in. Now, that doesn't preclude designs coming forward that maybe that keep certain aspects of our, our current City Hall, but I don't want to handcuff them, and I don't want to see increased costs go to the taxpayer as well. And I'll give you an example. The ninth floor has been totally redone in a very modern way of providing the new work dynamic. It allows for better collaboration, different workspaces. It encourages folks to come downtown to go to work here, quite frankly, because the space they're operating in is very conducive and very, much more enjoyable than it, than it was. As much as I would hate to see my office of outside brick and the interior go away, I can tell you it's not the most pleasant area to work in. So for those reasons, I think that'd be prudent not to tie hands of future councillors or planners or people bringing forward projects with Heritage restrictions or costs, because if the ninth floor had to jump through those hoops and extra permits, we might not have gotten to where we were with the cost that was spent or the time it took to get, go forward in that, which was exceptional. Like I mentioned, certain attributes here could well be maintained if they're perceived value. And those designs will be coming forward to either this council or future councils for us to, to make that call. But I don't want to handcuff people in the future. So I will support the committee recommendation.
Deputy Mary Lewis.
Thank you, worship, and I too have a different take than has been expressed by a couple of members of council, and I'm encouraging colleagues to support the committee recommendation. And I think we have to take two factors into account here. First of all, there is no development application for this property at the moment. And when the city brings one forward, then we can consider whether or not it's appropriate to do an additional Heritage study beyond the Heritage Impact Assessment, which would already, as we've heard Ms. McNeely say, be undertaken. When the time is right. Our staff are busy enough that we don't need to be tasking them with work that might not take place for five, six, eight years. We're a long way from making a decision in terms of a new seat of government for this council and for this municipality. So I agree with the comments that have been made about not handcuffing and predetermining an outcome for a future council, because some features may be worth saving, but that doesn't mean that the entirety of the building is worthy of Heritage designation, and there may be certain pieces that we want to carry over into a new City Hall or into a renovation here, but not others. And we need to leave flexibility for that in the future and for a future council's decision. But I also really have to take issue with the fact that it was said that we aren't listening to the experts. First of all, advisory committees are not experts. Let's, let's, there, there may be some people with some expertise on advisory committees, but advisory committees are not meant to be expert advice to replace our staff, nor did council ask the advisory committee to consider this. They put it on their own work plan based on the input from one member of the public asking them to do so and bring forward this request to us. We didn't ask for it. Advisory committees are there to advise council on council's direction and strategic plan, not on requests from the general public. And we have said no as a council to other Part Four designations. So while we, once a Part Four is in place, yes, we do expect the owners to uphold that, Part Four, once it's in place, but we have said no to other Part Four designations that have come before Planning Committee and before council. So to say that it's not valuing Heritage if we don't proceed with this, I fundamentally disagree. Each application that comes forward is based on an evaluation criteria and then of a decision from council based on the situations and the individual contexts of each individual application. But we have to be really careful. If we're going to start responding every time a member of the public comes to an advisory committee and asks the advisory committee to move something to council, that is not supposed to be the purpose of that, those bodies. And I think we are getting on a really slippery slope if we start doing this when one member of the public brings something to an advisor committee for them to move something forward to council. You know, I'd suggest that colleagues really take a close look at the terms of reference for advisory committees. I think they need some work, but they are certainly not meant to be an open door for new items to land on the council agenda. So I really encourage you to uphold the PEC report, which is to receive, and that's all we're doing today. It doesn't close the door to future action. It doesn't close the door to an evaluation of components of the Heritage of this building in the future, but there is no reason, when we are so far out, to task staff today with start, starting to do a long report, which by the time we make a decision on this building, may have different provincial regulations in play at that time as well. So this simply should be received. It can be dealt with in the future. It is not a today matter.
All right, I have Counsel Trosaw and then Counsel Frank.
Thank you very much, and I rise to the Chair to begin by thanking the Advisory Committee profoundly for bringing this to our attention. And in my view, yes, this is exactly what advisory committees are supposed to be doing, and yes, they do have expertise, and yes, they are there to give the public another opportunity to play into the, to the public, to the public process. So I really disagree with the notion that we should somehow be restricting advisory committees from looking at things like this. I think it's commendable that they took this up. Now, as, as to the merits, when I hear terms like handcuff, increase costs, tie hands, restrictions, extra permits, that's casting a negative light on the whole idea of Heritage protection, and I think that's wrong. Because when we, when we want a property owner to comply with Heritage rules, that's exactly what we're asking them to do. To me, the argument that, well, we can't, we can't ask ourselves to be held to Heritage standards because that might handcuff us or impose additional requirements, yes, that's what Heritage does, and there's a reason for it. And, and, and I, I want to give this advisory committee the opportunity to have this played out. I am not going to support the recommendation, and I hope that we're in a position to be able to move forward with at least looking at this. We're not making a decision today to grant this Heritage status. We're just, we're just not closing the door on it. To me, it's a little bit analogous to saying, we want, we want private property owners to maintain Property Standards, but not if it's our buildings. I mean, I just think that we have to be prepared as the city to walk the talk and not just ask other property owners to do it. So I hope, I hope we get the chance to look at this again, and again, thank you very much to the Advisory Committee for bringing this forward. Thank you.
Counsel Frank.
Thank you, yes. I'll be supporting the recommendation from the Advisory Committee, and so I just wanted to follow up, and similar to Counsel Trosaw, so I won't say all the things that he said. I actually do personally like it when members of the public suggest ideas and solutions to council through the advisory committees. I think it's an appropriate channel. I think that's where it can have a nice debate with members of that committee, and then it can come through our standing committees, so I think it's absolutely the most appropriate place for that to happen. And I'll add for the record that it was actually a member of the advisory committee that reached out to the member of the public who submitted the report and asked that she submit it. She didn't just wake up one morning and feel like it, although I have no doubt that she probably actually would do that. And additionally, I do feel like the members of the committee are following their terms of reference, so I guess that is a subjective thing that we have as councillors, but I think that they are well within their ability to provide commentary on things like the Heritage status of City Hall. So I appreciate other people's perspectives, but just want to share my own.
Thank you, and that exhausts our speakers' list except for Counsel Ramon, who's next.
Thank you, and through you. So I won't be supporting what came out of Planning as the decision at point at this point. My reason for that is I do believe that we need to look at this building and consider having a Heritage Assessment Evaluation Report, sorry, done at this point. I believe at the point that we have an application, we could be in a position where we're now faced with additional time constraints and therefore will be challenged to be able to do more with the building. My understanding from the discussion that was had at the committee and that then came through in letters of support for seeing this through a Heritage lens is that a lot of the, the building's Heritage elements are on the first floor as well as contained in this chamber. And so, again, my understanding is that what we could do at this point is if we defeated this recommendation and a recommendation, which I'm prepared to put on the floor, by the way, were to come forward, it could be that we undertake a Heritage evaluation of City Hall as necessary input into that MAP process. Again, it would allow us to know what we need to know at the start of the process instead of later on. It would allow for some, I believe, some good dialogue in the community about the significance of this building, the historical significance of it, the attributes of which the public, because it is their building, feel that, that they're connected to and tied to. And I think that as we look at this project and we say, you know, that this is a new, new space and place for people to work, it's also a new place for the community to seat government. And so again, I think that there's a really good opportunity for us to have a significant discussion, and at this point, it is a discussion. So I do think that for us to automatically assume that the costs are going to be significant or go up, I think of it more as repurposing or the opportunity to repurpose, the opportunity to make necessary evaluations of what's already here, and I see that as valuable, so I won't be supporting what's put forward by the committee.
Okay, that exhausts my speakers' list, so I'm going to open the vote, which is, just so, the vote is on the committee recommendation which the Chair put on the floor.
I vote no.
Thank you. Closing the vote, motion carries nine to six.
Chair.
Thank you. That concludes the fifteenth report.
Okay, on to the fifteenth report of Corporate Services Committee. We'll turn it over to the Chair for that.
Thank you, and through the Mayor, happy to do the fifteenth report of Corporate Service Committee. Great discussion at committee. Awesome to see that we still have AAA crediting, AAA credit rating. The Mayor spoke at length about the, the DC shortfall and the desire for the province to make its whole again. If you do want to speak again, you were over time last time, so keep it brief. But I am willing to put one through five on the floor, and I had no request for anything to be pulled. to be pulled.
Would anybody like anything voted on separately? Okay, seeing none. Any comments then? Go ahead, Counsel Stevenson.
Thank you. And through you, I just had a question to staff. As I was reviewing the mid-year capital budget monitoring report, on page 383, there's a project SH 1100 called Daytime Resting Spaces for $1,100,000 scheduled for Q4 2025. And in the comments, it says delay in securing land. I'm just not familiar with what project this is, and I was wondering if I could get some information.
Okay, go ahead.
Through you, your worship. I would have to double check that to make sure I know exactly what project that's referencing, given the uncommitted amount that's listed in that document. But I'll confer with, with our team and with Ms. Barbone's team.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. No, that was really my only, my only question. The other one, and I had sent an email, my delay send delayed it right until 11:00 this morning. I just wondered what beyond meant in the expected completion date column. A few of them say beyond, and I just wondered what that meant.
Do you have a page reference that the treasurer can just look at and then get a really clear?
It was on there several places, I think. Let me just look. I can ask, the other question I guess I had on here was, do these 2021 life-to-date capital budgets have funding attached to them on the balance sheet somewhere? And if so, where does that show up? And if not, where are the amounts expected for the 2024, 2025 items to be funded from?
Go ahead.
Thank you, through your worship. So the answer to the first question in terms of what's beyond, that would mean amounts that are beyond 2030, which is the 10-year capital plan. So that is referring to future, much, much more future projections beyond that.
Go ahead.
So there was just that other question about, in Appendix B, the 2021 life-to-date capital budgets that have funding attached to them, are they on the balance sheet somewhere? If so, where? And if not, where are the amounts expected to be funded from for the 2024, 2025 items?
Go ahead.
Thank you, through the chair. So with respect to specific projects, we'll have to go back and look at that and provide the specifics to you. But essentially, all of this approved funding would be through the multi-year capital plan. So where the budgets are approved, in theory, in the future years, are not subject till final ratification until the annual update. But anything through and committed would be part of that capital project and part of our capital commitments.
Okay, thank you. And through the chair, so just to clarify then, that 1.1 million for the daytime resting spaces scheduled for Q4 2025, in all likelihood, that funding's already been allocated. Is there somewhere approved already?
Go ahead.
Thank you, through the chair. So anything for 2024 would have been part of the approval through the multi-year budget in 2024, so that would be an approved budget. I don't know the specifics to that. We'd have to go back and look and could provide you the specifics because there would be the project detail record that would provide more information as to what that project entails.
Thanks. I brought up a specific example, but I meant overall, and I see that big, long list of projects. This one is 2025. So I imagine it's like scheduled out, and then we will, you know, confirm that in the Q20, in the 2025 budget update, I'm assuming.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So as I add进去 through the, through your worship, through the multi-year capital budget, we have a 10-year projection. So through the multi-year budget, we would have approved capital and operating up until 2028. And every year through the annual update process, those amounts would be ratified. So anything that is a change would be brought forward through the annual update and reconfirmed through the budget proceedings that will begin starting at the end of the month.
Go ahead.
Thank you, yeah, coming up soon. So if there's an answer on the resting spaces, great. If not, I can get it after council.
I don't know if there's an answer yet, but I know there's a commitment to get it after. I'll just, after? Okay, they're looking it up. Okay, thanks. I've, Counsel Prible next.
Thank you. And to my colleagues, there was also the 2.3 when we talked about operating budget. And there was a report that came in terms of kind of a preliminary potential surplus. But again, it's not going to be defined till next year. But I just want to state, just for information, that from one of our working committees, we did ask the staff to come back and address potential changes or proposals to the existing policy, which states where the surplus goes automatically into the, into the certain accounts. But the staff is going to come back before the surplus is, is defined next year. So therefore, we will have the opportunity to address this issue. I just want to share this with the councillors who weren't at the meeting. Thank you.
Any other comments on these items? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
I vote yes.
Thank you. Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
Thank you, Counselor. On to the third report of the Audit Committee. I'll go to Counsel Klosa.
Thank you, your worship. I have not been given notice to pull anything separate, and I'll look to you to that before I do interview for comments.
Sure. Is there anybody who would like anything separate from the Audit Committee? Okay, I'll let you make a motion.
Thank you. I will put all the items on the floor, one through five, noting that all members were present, discussions were had, and votes reanounced.
Great. Any discussion on the Audit Committee items? Go ahead, Counsel Stevenson.
Thank you. I did speak on this one at Audit Committee, but I wanted to do it again at council. In the briefing notes, so in 4.1, the briefing note from the internal audit, there is a compliance audit focused on the programming related to creating a Safe London for Women and Girls coming up. So to the November 13th Audit Committee is going to be an update on the scope of that, and then there's going to be a follow-up one after. It says the overall objective of the review will focus on the city's progress towards the execution of its creating a Safe London for Women and Girls initiative. So I spoke about this one at Audit Committee, and I talked about it at my community meeting. This was not an issue that I ran on. It was not something that was on my radar prior to getting elected. But it is now. It's really an important issue to me. I'm the one who asked this to be moved up from 2025 to 2024. And I did so at the time when there was a public debate happening about the services that we were providing for those who are, you know, for the homeless addicted women who are offering sexual services as a survival tactic. And it was, it came to a head when Safe Space came onto Dundas Street East, and I had residents who were concerned. And then there were a lot of concerns about that service, and I've talked about it numerous times here. It also resulted in all of the women's agencies coming out and making a complaint against me, which was dismissed by the Integrity Commissioner. And so there's a public debate happening right now about what is it that we're doing? How can we best support? And, and what can we do to create a safer London for women and girls? So my concerns are around the taxpayer funding of organizations that support and empower women in their sex work, knowing that the purchase of sex work is illegal. That was confirmed last fall. We had the death of Cheryl Sheldon in the news. People are very concerned about what happened there. There are safety concerns expressed by female tenants. I get numerous emails from landlords who say that their tenants love their apartment in Old East Village, but they do not feel safe going to and from their car, walking their dog, going to a local store. There was my experience recently, and I shared it at, in brief at the Audit Committee, but I had a homeless woman sleeping on my back deck. When I asked her how I could help her, she said she was from Toronto and she'd been trafficked. I called the human trafficking line. They put me in touch with a shelter. They put me in touch with London Cares for Outreach. I was unable to get that woman's support. I fed her breakfast. I gave her protein bars. I let her sleep longer. I tried to get her there, and I was not able to do it. This is a population that we say we are fully committed to, and I was unable to support that woman in that day. She did not get support that she needed. There was a woman interviewed by a news outlet that stated she'd been paired with a man she didn't know in one of our shelters and been evicted for complaining about it.
Your worship, point of order. Yes.
With, with all due respect, I realize the councillor is sharing some context, but I'm not sure how this is germane to the item before us on the Audit Committee. So if we could perhaps bring it back to the audit agenda that we're here to approve?
Yes. So I was allowing, as Counselor had said, she shared some of this information at Audit Committee, but I would just ask the councillor to get to the point of the audit item that is before us, and you've got a minute and 14 seconds left.
Okay, thank you. So the point is, a lot of people don't pay attention to the Audit Committee. It's not as exciting to everyone as it is to me. Now, this particular one, I think, should be of interest to people. I want the public to pay attention to what comes forward at the next Audit Committee and then what the results are. And I want them to really pay attention to what is it that we're doing well in the city? And what is it that we're not doing well when it comes to the safety of women? There are so many concerns, so many concerns. We are not a safe city for women and girls. And we need to be, and we're committed to be, and I know that this council is. So I'm asking people to pay attention to the Audit Committee, go and look at the video, go and look at the, the reports.
Thirty seconds.
And see what is coming next. There's lots to discuss, and I'd like the public involved.
Okay, I don't have any other speakers for the Audit Committee report, which is all the items? Okay, we're going to open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
And that concludes the third report of the Audit Committee.
Thank you. We have added reports, the 16th Report of Council in closed session. I've asked Counsel McAllister if he could present that report. Go ahead, Counselor.
It's not as long as it has been, so happy to do this. 16th Report of the Council in closed session. 4.9 Settlement Agreement, 671st Street, East London Link Project Phase Four. That is procedural matter pursuant to Section 239, subsection six of the Municipal Act 2001. The following recommendations be forwarded to council in closed session for the purpose of considering whether the recommendation should be forwarded to council for deliberation and a vote in public session. That on the recommendation of the deputy city manager, finance supports on the advice of the director, Realty Services with respect to the property located at 671st Street, further described as Part Lot 69, Plan 19, designated Parts One and Two, Plan 33R-6177, designated as Parts 22, 23, and 24, Plan 33R-21810 in the City of London, being part of PIN 08107-0001, as shown on the location map, as Appendix B, for the purpose of future road improvements to accommodate the East London Link Project. Following actions be taken. A, the settlement agreement from 829827, or 872, sorry, Ontario Limited to settle the compensation to the property owner for the total sum of 11,0700, subject to the terms and condition as set out in the agreement, as Appendix C be accepted and subject to the following conditions. I, the city agreeing to remove the tree along Oxford Street by December 31st, 2024 to facilitate sign relocation. I, the owner agreeing to remove the signage by March 31st, 2025. Following the tree removal, the city agreeing to pay the owner's costs for the sign removal and potential relocation up to 15,000 upon receipt of professional invoicing. The owner is responsible for obtaining necessary permits for signage at the new location. And B, the financing for this acquisition be approved as set out in the source of financing heretofore as Appendix A. And that progress was made with respect to items 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, 4.5, 4.6, 4.7, 4.8, 4.10, as noted in the public agenda. Do you want me to read out the agenda items at the end?
Thank you. No, that's good.
That's good, okay.
All right, that includes it. So that's, that's presented on the floor by the, by Counsel McAllister. If you could just stay standing, Counselor, while we take a vote on that. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
Great, thanks, Counselor. There are no deferred matters. Inquiries, I have one request for an inquiry. I'll go to Counsel Stevenson.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to ask, we had our first office conversion rental that we were all excited about downtown at 166 Dundas Street. We were anticipating a fall occupancy. It was a $400,000 investment, and I just wondered if there was an update as to when occupancy might happen and if there were any challenges encountered in this first one?
Sure, we can get an answer to that. I'll go to our staff.
Through his worship to the councillor, the timing of the projects is not known to the Building Department. I can confirm that there is an agreement under the CIP residential program. The first loan has been administered, and inspections were, have been called for and conducted. As to the actual occupancy date, we are unaware of the time at this point in time.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any problems that you're aware of in terms of delays or?
I'll let you answer one more, but inquiries are usually ask a question, get an answer, and debate is more for committee. But I'll, I'll let one follow-up go ahead, and we'll go.
Through his worship to the councillor, there is no delays that we're aware of at this time.
All right, thank you. Any other inquiries? Nope, seeing none. Emergent motions, I have none. Bylaws, we're on to bylaws, so just give me one second. So I don't have anything separate except for the added bill, which was related to the settlement agreement on a rapid transit project. So we'll deal with that separate at the request of one councillor. Everything else is currently together, unless someone would like something separate. Everything together, except for the added one that Counsel McAllister presented. Okay, so we'll deal with everything except the added one first, all together. Looks like everybody's good. I'm going to do what I tried last time, and whoever moves and seconds it gets to do that all three times. So we'll have Counsel Hopkins moved and Counsel Farrar second. And with that moved and seconded, we'll open first reading of everything except the added bylaw.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
Okay, and same mover and seconder for second reading? Any debate or discussion on any of these at second reading? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting too.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
And third reading, same mover and seconder? I'll open that as soon as it's ready.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to zero.
Okay, and we'll move on to the one that came out of closed session, which is the settlement agreement for First Street on the East London Link Project. I'll look for a mover and a seconder for that particular one. Counsel Cuddy, seconded by Deputy Mary Lewis. You guys will be the mover and seconder on all three. Okay, see nods? So we'll open the first reading for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to one.
Okay, and we'll do second reading, same mover and seconder, and I'll look for any discussion on second reading. Okay, that'll open as soon as it's ready. Okay, that'll open as soon as it's ready.
Closing the vote. Motion carries fourteen to one.
And third, same mover and seconder. We'll open the third reading for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries fourteen to one.
Okay, and that only leaves us for motion to adjourn. I have councillor Farrar willing to move and seconded by councillor Stevenson. We'll do that one by hand. All those in favor of adjournment? Any opposed?
That motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We're adjourned.